One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're meeting as a whole of us testers first. Do you have the list? Let me gather my thoughts here. Yep. I've got the original source assigned. So these, we have one, two, we have five abatements to, some of these were items that were not put in perpetuity path forward. So they were, we had one that went through the board review and did not, was processed in the moment, but not forward for those. So we have for map account, for map RO2-004, it was corrected acreage, which affected the land value. The old land value was $160,200. The new land value was $123,800, which yielded an abatement of $298.48. I recommend that we accept the abatement as presented.
Seconded? All in favor?
I'll just turn them over. The second one is for map RO6-003-801. It was a building that was demolished prior to April 1st of 2024, yet still appeared on tax bill. The building, old building value was $175,300 and the new building value was zero. There also was an adjustment in the land value. The old value was $111,800. The new land value was $78,800 with the abated tax amount of $1,708.6. I move that we accept the abatement as presented.
Seconded?
Any discussion?
All in favor?
For map U27-022, there was an incorrect land assessment. The land was valued at $351,100. The new value is $298,400. The land abated value is $52,700 and the abated tax amount was $432.14. I move that we accept the abatement as presented.
Seconded?
Any discussion?
All in favor?
This is for a border review decision that was not updated in Trio for map U11-022. The old value for the land was $294,000, $295,400. The new land value remained the same. The building value, the old value, was $1,017,800. The new building value was $454,600 with an abated building value of $563,200 and abated tax amount of $4,618.24. I move that we accept the abatement as presented.
Seconded?
Any discussion?
All in favor?
This is for RO2-016-M. It was the incorrect acreage. The old land value was $195,300. The new land value was $124,700 with the abated land value $70,600 and the abated tax amount of $578.92. I move that we accept the abatement as presented.
Seconded?
Second?
All in favor?
One extension. Stacy?
Seventeen.
You may talk quietly amongst yourselves while we sign papers.
Just so you all know transparency, I understand who it's a fairly relative.
Before we travel along, I have a question that's happened missing supplemental. So whether you want that on the public comments later on or when you're done signing it off.
So we've got a couple of minutes, you want to add something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's true.
How true.
Although I would miss which one you want to spread.
I have friends who have seen them while they've gone to my house.
That's twenty-seven because she did tomorrow.
I just got this good.
Just put a line, put a check, make a motion seventeen, yeah. I did use dates. I think there's been a lot of that.
Test.
You need to approve your paper coming from this slide for me.
That's right. And if I'm going to submit, I'm going to do it.
Yeah. I'm just glad I can't be the one following else and I could hide up with somebody.
That would have been a healthy choice.
Well, I'm trying to be good. It's not my character.
We've had more fun. Put that in their hands for safekeeping.
May I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
I recognize the lease dues, and I'm not sure if common law, but when we're hearing the reference that the acreage was incorrect, there at least with Steves, there was a land division. The division was not accomplished, and that's why the acreage that Steve had on April 1st was incorrect. His abatement, right on target. I don't have any questions about what you have abated. My question to you is this, and I've been asking it for a year. I don't think you have all your land divisions done. You have focused on the abatements, and we needed that. But the land that was divided, there is no account. We had checked this afternoon. There is no account created so that the person who took the land division was billed a defense warrant when these taxes go out. That requires a supplemental warrant. It requires a creation, a new account creation with a McCann software. Where's their list of that? And I don't mean it quite that little. I'm not doing any. Josh has been everything done to him. That's not what I'm pursuing. But if it's not a heavy focus, what one typically does when you have an abatement because a split was overlooked, is you cross-reference. See supplementary warrant of the date. And it's created, and that bill goes up. And then on the supplemental warrant, you have a cross-reference. See abatement number, what the abatement number is. And then when the auditors come for main revenue, when Louis comes to audit the financials, the cross-reference is right there. The explanation is not only to what occurred, but that both major problems were resolved. And I am not hearing any discussion, and I will repeat, I've said this for a year. I don't think this is your only one or two.
I noted that on here, and I will discuss it with Josh next week when he's here.
And do report that publicly, whether as an agenda item or not.
I added a couple of comments so I could communicate with him.
Yeah, and let's get it on as an agenda item, Suzanne, instead of just saying you made a note. Thank you. And thank you all three for letting me express that.
I just need like two more minutes to look at the other warrant here. So keep talking.
So you haven't had a lot of discussion with Josh about it, Suzanne?
I did not. I put it on here to talk to him, and I added it to unadmitted.
Okay. Suzanne is reviewing the warrant.
We just got the warrant.
Which we just received. Okay.
Oh, yeah. No, I won't. I'll behave myself.
I'll go ahead.
Well, I just wonder if we're all going to stop and look at those and have a recess, or just Suzanne was done.
They're here. This one's done to look at. I was just doing what you guys were signing. I was trying to fly through it.
We could recess. Is that a motion? Why don't we recess at five minutes?
Well, we can really talk about you.
Yeah, don't pretend to hear, but not.
That's fine.
Or not here, whatever.
It's a valuable business technique, I find, don't you, Gavin?
Yes.
A lot of people. There's a lot of people. And Josh is taking a key devil if the land does well.
What do you point someone?
The next boundary I'm going to bug you over.
I actually took a call on your boundary today. I will bring that up in the meeting.
This is, this location here where the, where the road, the stream comes down through, that's the town line. Hillary's old.
Like we talked about when we have the vote, they'll do.
And it follows. The eighty-fourth one.
Like when they know they have a.
There's not like any question on the line.
That's because when they stood at the, the women's.
I thought we had a way that is a question.
The road bend was. The road bend showed through, showed up through. And the legislature talking, it went through that.
Oh, man.
That's what I.
They don't, they didn't live that way down.
Yeah, he gets serious.
You actually wouldn't register it, you know, but you can't get that fit. And I remember the road. Generally.
I think these.
Yes.
These, the ground.
Which road was that?
And how do I have the road?
Oh, yes.
You know where the stream comes through?
Yeah.
The town line goes to the stream, and then it follows the road. But they moved the road, and nobody bothers. So it makes no sense to put the line back through the middle of the road.
Change that. Change, change.
I tried.
Besides.
But he doesn't hesitate.
So I don't have to say this one.
That was good.
It's exactly.
Oh, it was perfect.
Now that you're all talking so nicely to one another, I'm going to call us back in order.
Oh, darn. Okay.
And now we are meeting as the select board. I have your question on the tentative agenda. The consent agenda, I'm sorry.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I guess I should have looked at it. Here we go. With the, with the notation that we don't have minutes yet, Tracy is working to get the election straight at this point, and then it will be forthcoming. Do I have a second?
How can we second if we don't have that?
Well, we consider warrants seconded. Move acceptance of the warrant. I know they said the warrant is presented. We'll leave the agenda off that until we see it.
All right.
And I'll second.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor? The next select board meeting will be November 7th, 2024, at 5:30 here at the Town Hall. Old Business, we have plowing, we discovered with the winter of town plowing, the town property's plowing contract. The low bid did not have the equipment listed that was required in the,
In the bid.
In the bid package, that's the word, thank you. And if you recall, the motion was made to accept that low bid if everything met the specifications of the bid package. On advice of our attorney, we should reissue the bid package, and we can do that with a short term.
A very short.
Very short.
Two-day term.
Well, let's see. We should at least give people to Wednesday, I would think. Which is when?
Well, if we put it in the paper, will you put it in the paper tomorrow? For Tuesday?
We've got to grab it. The paper only comes out twice a week now.
Yeah. When does it go to?
I think charges the same.
I'm sorry? I didn't know what you said.
It's published two days a week, but the charge will be the same. I'm sorry.
Tuesday and Friday.
So we, why don't we post it in the paper on Tuesday, but the bids do Thursday? And we can post it on the website immediately also. That work for everyone?
I don't think it gives people very much time. I think you'd give them two, two, at least a week's time.
But they had, this is just a reissue.
So what if you want, somebody else wants to bid on it? Those aren't the only two.
Which is that we have a timeframe. We're supposed to start November 1st. We're under a shortened.
I don't think three days, more days, given to people the opportunity. It's going to tie into your timeframe. That is a Tuesday and Friday, and they can still, still go to have it in within a week?
Open the business on November 7th.
Right, that makes sense. Even though the contract starts the first.
Yeah, because if they got it on the first, they still would be getting paid.
Okay. What did the bid opening on seven?
If it snows, then.
We'll bring a shovel.
If it snows, we'll shovel.
Well, let's keep in mind that this contract also includes school, and we did have frost this morning. And if we don't have someone to say in that part law, we have a problem.
We will get someone to say it. I am sure Mr. Hill would help us. And I can bring that to.
So today's is seventeen. Do we, do we think we could, I mean, do we need to put a, that's a two, three, that's a three-week timeframe. That's what I'm saying. Why don't we back it up so that we, we could do it? So it doesn't have to be on a Thursday.
No.
So we could, why don't we say it's due, we'll open the bids on the 28th? Isn't Monday the 28th work for us here? So why don't we, we'll post it with the bid opening on the 28th, which will give us time to have the contract go into effect on and by the first for the school.
So when you open a bid, not as a select board meeting, you just made up it's like upstairs.
People can come, people can, we'll do it here. People can come to it. But we'll, we need to have the bid specs.
Yeah.
With this when we open bids, which we didn't have, so that we couldn't verify what was required.
Right.
But it will be a posted meeting. There'll be.
All right.
And the agenda will be posted.
So when are you going to open the?
The bid opening will be on the 28th. We'll post it certainly.
If we post it today's, if we post it Friday and Tuesday, that should be fine.
Right. It, we should be, tomorrow, we can put it in the paper for Tuesday.
Right.
And then, and then Friday. And then the bid opening will be.
I just think we have more contractors in town than we are returned.
And we can post it immediately on the website. And I, I think, yes. Yep.
Yes, Pete.
Are we confident that the bid specs are accurate? And I ask because the person who was the little bidder has been plowing for years.
Yes.
And now we're saying they don't have the right equipment.
The, the equipment was.
Updared.
Thank you.
And so can you actually put something in the paper for tomorrow?
We'll put it in tomorrow to run on Tuesday.
Okay, I misunderstood what you said.
It, we'll contact them tomorrow to run it Tuesday and Friday.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the old business side is the approval of the town administrator's job description. This is not the final copy. We have some.
We made some edits to it. So, do you have, does everyone have a copy or?
We have what was posted on the website, which is verbatim what you discussed when we were anything weeks ago.
So we, so I, what I can do is I, can we just read in the edits? Yeah. So in the fir, the opening paragraph, it said chief administrator officer. We changed it to town administrator. We don't have this. Chief officers are code names, not. We added, in the third paragraph, it said developing administration. We turned it into administrative procedures. We added in the word, in the fourth paragraph, one, two, three, four, fifth line, it said board, we added select, make it select board. In the fifth paragraph, when they were talking about the various agencies between, it said various boards and commissions, we added in task force, because we also want the task force. In the, in the eighth paragraph, we added carries out the directives of the select board, prepares reports and written recommendations as part of these initiatives we add in a timely fashion. In the next paragraph, it says prepares for attends meetings of the select board and other municipal committees as requested, preparing and providing supportive documentation and information pertinent to agenda items, accomplished as minutes of the meeting, and we add it, and post packages four days prior to each meeting when possible. And the next paragraph says serves as a liaison between the select board and personnel, acts as personnel director for the town, hires with the select board approval, evaluates and directs the town staff, it said per the HR policy. And the second page, one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh, in the seventh paragraph, represents a town to a variety of outside organizations, follows all written policies as set by the select board, purchasing HR, all those policies. Knowledge, we added to this sentence beneath that. Knowledge of application process for state and federal grant programs and provides updates on all applications and progress. In the last sentence on page two, ability to maintain positive relations with town personnel and to direct, supervise and motivate staff, and is prepared to engage with town residents, including counter service as needed. And that's all.
I believe in you. One of the paragraphs was the rest to know the tax collector duties. How about the clerk's duties?
Is he got, many chances?
Because on the, some of the guidelines from the first discussions of town administration, be hired twenty years ago where it was supposed to, this person would know how to do the clerk's job and treasurer's job on a given basis, but the deputy, so they could fill in as needed on the calendar for all operations. So I think it's along the tax collector, the clerk's job should be mentioned there.
I just need to find where that is in here.
We have, prepare to serve at country, to engage with the community to serve it, to serve the country as necessary.
And I, I made it as necessary?
Well, we have, if we made it, if we made it mandatory is part of the job description to acquire knowledge of both the tax collector.
The treasurer, knowledge of a statutory treasurer's responsibility is practiced in the state of Maine, why wouldn't you need knowledge of the clerks?
And prepared to serve as the deputy tax collector.
So.
That was the idea. Potential way to phrase it.
Okay, so I bet knowledge of the statutory town clerk's responsibility. And, and say, finish that, what you said.
Yeah, she said deputy, that was the idea.
He had to serve as, not necessarily to take the position. But to serve as the deputy to the town clerk and the tax collector. And. And the municipal round recognizes the intent of that.
Yeah. And I think we discussed that in case somebody gets sick, somebody wanted to.
I just want to say, some writings out, and be prepared to serve as the deputy?
Yes, as the deputy town, tax collector and deputy town clerk. It clarifies it's subordinate, it's not expected to mark everything and.
Just fill in it.
Fill in it. Be competent to have the tax paid.
And if we leave the engagement at the.
Okay.
The ability, then that emphasizes that that's the expectation.
So we will have this finalized. So.
One other?
Uh huh. Serves as the approval agent for town purchasing.
What page are you on?
It's on the second page. I apologize, the fourth line down.
Okay.
That was where some of the most heartfelt criticism came from the front board, that the town administrator serving as the purchasing agent overspent without approval. I am again suggesting that that, in fairness to the new employee, make it clear they are the purchasing agent with the authority to place the order up to the limit established by the board of selectmen prior to your approval, something to that effect. This is telling whoever you hire, if they can find 20 grand, go ahead and spend it. I mean, that's not the intent. And fairness to the new employee, saying there is a limit, I don't think you need to say what the limit is, because you're going to change that periodically.
To follow the purchasing policy as written.
Well, yeah, but they, it should be clear, I was going to bring the same thing up. It should be clear that this person did not total purchase. That's right. The selectmen approved, the town approved in the first place.
Yeah, because there was a lot of discussion up here when there was.
Things purchased.
Refrigerators purchased.
Table.
Table, $250 delivery fee for the table, for said table.
So it should be clear that the kids can't purchase what they want purchased.
So somehow you may need to change.
To serve as an approval agent of the town purchasing.
With approval.
With.
I E W.
The approval of the select.
Yeah, and in accordance with the purchasing policy.
Policy, yeah. And a, and approval of select board. And in accordance.
I think it's fairish to.
To.
Yeah, because there's nothing worse than picking, you've got approval to get it, as then you get reprimanded.
You get a great sale.
Policy.
And I have one last one, and I know it's nice, but.
Same page?
We, well, it's not there, but I wrote it on that page the last time you went over this weeks ago. Responsible to obtain proof of liability insurance from all contractors annually. You have no reference to it, and I strongly feel it should be in. This would be an age.
Yeah, so we have, on the, on that page, on the page, if you go down, one, two, three, four, up from the bottom, working knowledge of person, purchasing principles and practice, including bid process, to include.
I don't know that it would be included there. I would expect it to be a separate sentence, and it's a separate topic.
Right.
They are responsible to obtain it. Clearly, we had someone who thought if they were incorporated, state obtained it.
Well, it's.
And we all know that it's not about. To obtain.
Insurance.
Proof of liability binders from all town contractors, town affiliated contractors, however you feel best about phrasing it. But from anyone doing contractual work for the town. But from anyone doing contractual work for the Town, be it your assessor, be it your wind-up blow guy, that that individual, as the Town Administrator, is responsible to obtain copies of those lines.
And I think that's really important. Last year, we had, um, a couple of contractors ask Christine, said they could lower their bill if they didn't have to do the liability piece of that stuff.
I think we need to clarify.
They mean to be listed, and proof that we're listed on all, because we need to be listed as a covered entity.
Yeah.
Uh, liability binders from all contractors doing work for the Town.
I said, "We'll obtain proof of liability binders for all Town contractors."
In the Town or for the Town, I think.
For all Town Contractors.
Yeah.
And that the Town is a listed insured.
I mean, if somebody wants to speak.
No, we, we value.
I, I wouldn't mind if you repeated that in purchasing policies as well. Just. Could you not go back to that subject?
Well, we have, uh, we have halfway through that, "Follows all written policies as set by the Select Board", is its own line item, which falls, that, that should be added to the purchasing policy.
I acknowledge being redundant, but I don't.
I'm okay with her going to say that. Overprotection is not a problem.
Fair to the staff.
David.
Well, a comment about this Town Administrator, this is about, what, five, six months now? We've had no Town Administrator?
Four. As of November one.
May, May.
June, July one.
Yeah. Well, in effect before that.
Right.
The, obviously, that upstairs is quite overworked.
It's terribly overworked. We're going to talk about that.
Is it possible this position can be filled within, within the current employees at a faster pace if one of them is qualified for that position?
I'm not opposed to that.
There's certainly a possibility, but I'm not going to be making that decision, so.
Well, I think it should be seriously discussed.
I think when you put something like that out, you're required to interview everyone that applies.
But we, I, I, we legally validate it, can we hire from within? And then source. A replacement for said duties.
I believe it should be looked into to see what the legal, so here.
MMA legal requirements of the country.
So, I, I'm not aware of any legal requirement. However, first thing we need to do is check what our hiring policy says, and adhere to those. I'm also concerned, especially what we've seen here this evening, that we, if we don't follow a documented, detailed process in this selection, we lose credibility. And I'll be frank, the Board doesn't have a lot of credibility right now. In part because of the way the Town Administrator has been handled. And when we anoint somebody, it makes it incredibly unfair to that person if they didn't go through a process.
Absolutely.
And I'm not saying they're not qualified, I just, I think we need to keep that in mind. I agree with you, the, the SAV is tremendously overworked. Shame on us. We should have had a process and a system in place to make sure that didn't happen.
Yeah, and I think it's important.
We need to, for our trust back.
Going forward, that the, that the process is open. And, as you say, done as well as possible. And then we should have a process set up for the future.
So another thing we tend to do on this board a lot is we've gone over the Town Administrator's responsibility several times now. When is it going to be posted?
So are we, are we comfortable with the edits here that we've made this evening? I, I, I move that we accept the updates that we've made to this, this evening as final and post these certainly on the MMA site by.
Yes.
Jay.
I'd like to see a copy of it edited and corrected on the website or unlike you see and read it, because I think you need to edit it two or three times carefully, not try to ram this through, that's where you get in trouble. And give it to a few people who'd like to see it and see if you have any more comments.
So, so how about we post it on the website Monday, ask for feedback by Wednesday.
Okay.
And then move forward with a final version and post it by Friday on MMA. Does that seem like suitable?
We need, I think we need to have a final vote on the final copy before we post it.
I think you're right.
Yes. So do you want to add that to our bid opening on the twenty eighth?
I would do. I don't know why we need to wait for that.
Have a special meeting.
We can do a special meeting, sorry, I'm concerned, anytime next week.
But so we're, we're saying we're going to have the final feedback due on Wednesday, and we can, why don't we just move up the bid to that same date? I mean, we're, we're looking at having two meetings two days apart.
That's not a problem, it'll be five minute meetings. I mean, it shouldn't be more than ten minutes.
Do we want to move the bid this way, or we're up to the same meeting then?
No, I want to give people as much chance as possible to get the bid out. If somebody's been thinking about it and has an opportunity to do that. We need to give a big favor to the Town and that potential bidder.
Not only that, the bid may have came in wrong, and the person may not have had the right appointment, because they changed that, and they didn't really get a chance to read it, so give them to people the opportunity.
They're both incredibly important topics. Giving them the dignity of two meetings is an imposition on you, but what the Town has experienced in the last many parties is need to be respectful to do that.
I think so too, Monia. It's not going to be very, it shouldn't be very time consuming to take a look at the final copy and give final approval in a public meeting.
So we have the twenty eighth, we're at five, we're here at five thirty for the twenty eighth, is that what we're going to do? Evening meeting? For the snow bid?
For the snow bid, yeah.
It's five thirty, and then what do?
And if we, and we're asking for comments by the twenty third. Twenty third, we could meet on the twenty fourth.
Or we could meet.
Because we want to get it posted as soon as possible.
Yeah. Okay. Also at five thirty?
Sure, that's the time of this meeting, Mike.
Time track. If you're taking public comments, you either update the policy or you ignore the public comments. So your time, your timing is quite different.
Well, if we do it, if we have it, they're due to us on the twenty third, and then the meeting will be on the twenty fourth. It gives us a day to incorporate changes and then come to the meeting.
If one of you was Julie Mack and stood Julie, uh, I mean, and, and this poor lady is voting most of the Town lives, so.
So it gives, it gives us a day to incorporate any changes submitted.
You going to post it again?
Well, it'll, it'll, it'll be at a meeting, it'll be, the public meeting will be on the twenty fourth. So you can.
What you're saying is if we, yeah, if he pulls it the twenty third, then we have, if, if we're going to reincorporate, then we'd have to meet again. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, post it on the website on the morning of the twenty fourth, is that what you're saying?
Yes, just.
Or midnight oil?
Don't surprise people.
Post on ten twenty four.
I, I'm not a gentleman, just don't surprise people.
Okay. Post on ten twenty four during the day, meet that evening at five thirty. That work for you, Tracy, this is posted? Or maybe?
So, yeah.
Or between you and Julie?
Post them.
So we're, we're going to ask for updates by ten twenty three. And we will post, we'll make the edits for updates submitted and post the final version as it stands on the twenty fourth during the day and meet that evening at five thirty to review and make final.
Who is going to decide whether or not we're going to take the suggestions that are offered by the public?
Right.
Will we decide here on the twenty fourth, doesn't it? You will, okay, thank you, Mike.
But again, if you, if you're deciding to or not doing that, like editing, you still got to do a final.
We still have to have a final copy reviewed.
You guys, you're gonna have to take some time, give up and just allow some time to do it right. If you screw up, you're gonna, because you've gone too fast, we're gonna do this all again.
Let's not do it again.
No.
If we have, we will, if, we will have, if we have public comment written or.
So why can't we do that on the twenty fourth and if there's more public comment?
Review it again on the twenty eighth when we open the bids. That's an excellent suggestion.
Okay. Yeah.
If we're not necessary, then reasonable then.
So, public comment, and we don't know if there's any submitted, if there's not, then we're fine.
Right.
From that point also. If there are, we, so we'll, we'll post edits on the twenty fourth. And then, do we still meet on the twenty fourth then?
We absolutely have to, because if we're going to have any edits, we all have to approve it.
And then, and if there's, and if we have edits, if we back it, we'll be editing the meeting on the twenty eighth.
Right. And the twenty fourth will be the cutoff for any further edits.
Yeah. So we're done, defended on the twenty eighth, regardless.
Right.
Okay, so, okay.
And.
So how, I guess we should just post the edits, we're not going to incorporate them, and we're not going to make an edit and post it on the twenty fourth if we have any word on it. So we can.
If we, we can vote on the twenty fourth if there's something we wish to add.
But how do, my question is how we put the edits? If we, if we have it as it sits, we would get, if we get an edit on the twenty third and we want to post it, we need to post the edit suggestion and not have it incorporated in the document, because we haven't voted on it.
But you'll vote on it the night of the twenty fourth, then we'll be ready for the twenty eighth.
Right, we can have a convo with.
Suggested edits?
Suggested edits in red.
Okay.
Just because an edit comes through doesn't mean it's going on.
No, no, I'm trying to figure out how to post, how to put it into the document.
You don't trust us?
I trust.
Some of you, some of the trust.
That's safe.
So we'll have the suggested edits in red in the posted document.
Yes.
And then review it in person that evening, and then vote final on the twenty eighth if we have to. Right. Okay then.
So the final updates are due ten twenty three?
Yes.
Uh, let's say by noon.
And this is going to be posted on the website also, so other people that aren't here can make their edits and suggestions too?
Mm-hmm.
The twenty eighth is outside five thirty?
Yes.
Do we have anything other on old business? I don't know. New business? We have our copy of the state, the municipal assessors, the state valuation. I don't know if everybody has copies. And so we have, we, Josh wasn't able to stay today. He didn't know we were doing this, because I didn't ask him in time for him to make plans. So, we can postpone this or the people who are qualified as municipal assessors could say something about what this is if they're willing to do so. So I, I reviewed some of this with Josh today. Do you have yours handy?
I have it. I would love to hear directly from Josh, and I'm going to ask the question, is there any possibility, since you're meeting a week from tonight, that Josh might be able to express his opinions live a week from tonight? I, I greatly value his insight. I certainly have my own, as Mike does, and we're very qualified to have that insight. Though we're not providing the function.
Right.
If he was potentially able to stay on the twenty eighth, to me, that would seem logical.
The twenty, the year?
The twenty fourth.
The year?
Excuse me, I did say the twenty eighth multiple times, and thank you. Uh, in a week from tonight is the twenty fourth, I misspoke that date multiple times.
So we, we will clarify that again. We will make sure that when it's reviewed, he's present.
It kind of links into the supplements that we've taken into the ability of the manual that we feel, you know, still pursuing potential recalls from back appraisal efforts and completeness in terms of linking the ability to identify a method of paring to enable him to create the accounts for those divisions. We've debated the person who was damaged, but we haven't captured the new ones. He's the one doing it. It links into this, and it links into the overall potential of that input being valuable to this board and potential pursuit of correction, to say it diplomatically. So if he could conceivably be here a week from tonight, to me, that would be incredibly valuable.
So can you, can you, here, contact any?
Sure.
Um, any other new business?
Yes. There were a couple of things, actually. So David touched on this a little bit earlier. Our staff has been exceptionally overworked. And they are putting in significant amount of hours beyond their required duties. I have a list, I think we all have this, a list of what their comp hours are. Right now Julie has a hundred and forty hours of comp time, almost a hundred and forty-one. And that, this is as of, this is a week ago, I think, current. And I know she was here over the weekend. Tracy has twenty-nine hours of comp time, as of a week ago. So I think we need to address this as a payment to them. I think they should, if we have it in the Selectmen's contingency fund, I think we should pay them accordingly, based on the hours of work. They've put a significant amount of time into managing without the Administrator here to assist in that. And they've done a fabulous job with what they have.
And it wouldn't relate to Tracy, because she's such a recent hire. But for Julie, I anticipate she also has a significant amount of vacation days that are building up, that under our personnel policy, she would not be allowed to carry forward to next year. We have, there may be a saner time that she could actually enjoy them, or maybe get a series of Fridays off and some long weekends. So while I would anticipate that Tracy and Julie would probably welcome dollars as compensation for this comp time, I would if I was them, the vacation, rather than thinking about buying it out, because there's no time for them to take it, and money does not give you relaxation and mental health to consider for the vacation time that typically could not be carried forward. We, the Town, created the situation to at least consider giving that a grandfather status in this case, that it be carried forward to the next year or the next eighteen months, for something fair and reasonable on the vacation that she will lose as a disbursement first.
So I can tell you Julie has two hundred and nine, almost two hundred and ten hours of vacation time, crude, currently.
What is our policy on sick time?
Julie gets it carried, oh, and sick time is, because she's got eight out of thirteen hours of sick time. So, so these guys aren't taking any time off.
I think sick carries fun.
It does, but.
Vacation cannot approve.
Vacation, I think, vacation approves, I think, a, a week. Um, and I have to look at maybe two, but I think it's, they don't carry.
Whatever it is, skim it, carry it.
I think we need to look at our policy.
We do, but I think.
Maybe you should check with the employees. Maybe you can check with the employees and see which way they wanna go. Comp time, vacation time, pay time. Check with them to see what works best for them in that situation.
And there may be some combination there of...
That's right.
I agree, but we need to know what our policy...
Yeah, check with the employees too.
And the lights might contract that vacation time as well.
Because it's, it's significant.
It is significant.
They have kept the town afloat in a very, very tenuous environment.
And they need the mental comfort
They do.
of some quality time off. Not, "Oh, let me use that day because I'm gonna lose it", when everything is still chaos behind it.
Thankfully, Julie is taking. The two days after the election, she's gone, Thursday, Friday, and the following week.
Right.
She has earned it. And, and I know some of us in this room are sitting, and I'm gonna bring my computer and work a couple of days from here, instead of from my home office. I know, Jane, you're coming in, I think you're coming in too.
I'd be rolling that, if there was something.
We're just trying to...
Oh, I could do file or something, tell them.
I don't answer phones. I mean, I can't register cars.
I can't, yes.
Yeah, I can say hello.
Hello, and no one can register your car today, coming in again.
So, let's put the expiration of that under future agenda items, compensatory time and money for staff?
Yeah, check with the staff.
On how they wanna utilize it, yeah, it should be up to them.
Gee, what an idea. And it, and I would think that we would make it flexible enough so that everybody doesn't have to take the same, same compensation.
Right.
That it should be...
That makes sense.
Of the way that each person would like to have the compensation.
But they, they've all earned it.
Yes.
I, it's, I asked Julie to calculate that.
Well, the other thing that I would make as an observation, when we were between administrators a while back, I was the designated phone answerer, and the office was busy. The office is far busier. And, and even through the quiet seven months, it was far busier this time around than it was last. I hate to say such a thing, because it's my taxes too. But I think we really need to be looking at somebody who may be able to serve as an assistant to the office personnel. Because the town administrator, when he, she, they come on board, is going to be busy doing town administrator stuff. And it may not happen this year, but I think that is something that we really need to start thinking about.
What are you starting, Mrs. McGohey, to do?
Uh-huh. Yeah, that's, I was wanting to be somebody who could come and fill in on an as-needed basis.
Well, I think those are things that need to be discussed.
I think you're right.
Is there another public comment? Do you wanna talk about this is... Oh, yes, I do, actually.
Oh, I have, wait, I have one more thing before that. So, we, I had a conversation today with Mark Myers from the town of Bath, talking about the property line. And we, so he has a recommendation coming from site lines over, and I said, "Go ahead and submit it, and you should certainly go back to both of our town attorneys" from that perspective. So it's still in progress, and we're bringing it a little to the forefront of the discussion.
Yeah, I, I've been talking to Bruce, we'll go back and forth. I would like to have a West Bath kind of little 20-minute workshop before you do a bath. Merge the two together. Bruce and I don't, you'll be shocked, don't necessarily hit the same... I have more questions about legality than practicality. It's practical to settle, to settle it, but you're not allowed to make a settlement. You don't have that power. And that's...
And I think that's why it was recommended to get it back to our attorneys with that information.
The, and you've switched attorneys. The attorneys, based upon the Wells-York dispute, said you had to do 2851 first. You've done that. There's not going to be a solution without going to 2852, because nobody in the world knows where the watermark was in 1844. I now think it's under the trussel for the trophy that they put in in 19, 1989 or something like, 1889, something like that. It can't be done, it needs to go. So... I hope you simply take the new attorneys and say, "Let's go to step two." Send it off to the court. We'll worry about it in four years.
And that, and so at least it's not dead. Which is still a problem, and I, I was so bold at that time to say, I think we have some other things that we need to work on, which was also the sewer line over at the industrial part of it. Bath's sewer is under our land, and I wanted that also addressed. Should we have an issue, we should not be responsible to fix the sewer line.
Absolutely, but we need to find out where it is.
So, but I, but I brought that, and he goes, "Yeah, I've heard about that." I said, "Yeah, let's, 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 let's put this as a group effort on all of this and, and straighten out some of these issues that we have."
Be, be, because you cannot do it without the court. You gotta make a deal now on the sewer line, or you better wait, make the sewer line wait for a long, long time, because the courts aren't functioning real quickly either.
So, but I, I also brought that to the surface of recognition.
Well, I think, I'm sure Mike and Julie...
He, he was a little quiet, but it's, I think it's important that we address and protect the town in that situation, and didn't want it to go unpermed, as it has been.
So when we're speaking about that, we had the other issue with the snowplow in there, did that ever get resolved?
Oh, yes. Did we add that? No, that didn't get...
I don't think that was resolved either.
That should go onto old business. What we're talking about is the plowing over there, that Derek Dunson was doing his own plowing, and a car had an accident over there and was totaled. And in theory, he's not supposed to be plowing town property. So that, was that added to our snowplow contract?
I don't think it was. Better do that.
Well, it was requested to be done.
Right, okay, so... So before we post that again, maybe we need to add that in the plow contract.
Yep.
Well, that's, that's a town road, I remember.
It is, it should be a contract.
There'd be Jamie.
There'd be Jamie.
And just, Jamie needed to add it to his, it's a town road.
Yeah.
At least when we had that conversation.
Not a town property per se.
But the little wrinkle is, because it's a town road, Bath is responsible not through the line, you have less plow.
Yeah, and where's the line?
Right.
Would the accident occur, which 20-foot side of the line is...
It was actually the bath, it happens. It wasn't our responsibility.
So, I added that to, someone needs to have that discussion with Jamie.
Yeah.
And standing is all too...
All of it. It, it falls under the winteriness of... How does that...
I think there's one more thing here. There is one more thing on the new business. We have the hearing with Max on the resiliency program, and we have a volunteer for serving as the chair of the resiliency committee. He seems very highly qualified. So we will, we'll be looking at that. Looking for volunteers to serve on the committee, so that there's more than one person. Be nice to have at least three.
And time is of the essence, because we have, there's two different grants that are suitable for us to be considered for. One is $5,000 to $75,000 for just West Bath. And, and we have a list of things that are acceptable that fall into that category. But there's also a $175,000 grant. That is more of a collaborative, where Bath, West Bath could do something, or we could have... And one of the things that we spoke about was saltwater intrusion in the wells on some of the waterfront, and how that could fall under... That's something we could do, you know, with Phippsburg and West Bath with the waterfront, and there's, and so there's, so we need to... And this only is available till the end of, like, December 17th, I believe, is the grant deadline. So, time is of the essence for us to engage in this process. So we need to not only get the committee in place, but then decide what item is most dear to us, and do we wanna go with just West Bath, West Bath, or do we wanna do a collaborative approach while this money's available, I guess is the best way to put it.
It was my understanding that there'll be a second round of grants at, at the six-month period as well. So this isn't the last, this isn't the last of them.
But we, so we, and we can participate in both.
Right.
I think it's ask for what we can get today, and then ask for what we can get tomorrow. So that's kind of where we are on this. Tracy, was this posted?
The other, the other...
Yes, so this is, this is on the website, this is the recommendations. These are the, there's like eight categories that it shows what you can, what each one qualifies for and the level and that. So we, what we need to do is, as a, as a committee, is select the the items that we believe we qualify for in this short window, that we think we can easily pull a grant application together. So it's, you know, this may not be the pie in the sky time, because time is limited.
So you've suggested we should go on the website, please, all of this, and consider volunteering? Am I nearing it?
Well, at least, or at least put your, put your thoughts in on here, what I think we should do, and also like... And this is, these are the, the partnership, that the, these are approved processes that the state is prepared to honor grant applications for. I guess is the best way to put that.
It's on YouTube channel.
Looks like there's some funding for school improvements too. I guess you might wanna have Emily take a look at this too.
But see, the, it's, but I wanna, we should look at something that can be selected and applied for in about a six-week timeframe, roughly. So don't, this is not the time for, to go for this, it's the time to go for this.
So are you a member of the committee?
I'm prepared as an committee, yes.
Okay, and Madeline, will you be on the committee?
Yes.
So we have a chairperson and two members of the committee, and four?
Well, we need community.
I know, I know.
Madeline is gonna be community.
No, I don't think she's interested.
You will count as such.
Yeah, is the, is the, is the chairperson trying to recruit them?
He is, he had, he thought he had people in his neighborhood also. But the problem is that we have a really short window on this initial statement.
So can you put out the chair's name, in case anybody wants to contact him?
Let's check with him.
Well, he sent in that email, that he was... His name is Spencer Hallowell. From the Bath Hallowells, he says.
Oh, yeah. What's his name?
Spencer Hallowell. H-A-L-L-O-W-E-L.
Any relation to the clip?
He says he's from the Bath Hallowells.
She said, "I mean, the volunteer for the resiliency committee was thinking of running for the chair, said committee that may be proposed tonight, select board meeting, and I'm unable to make tonight's meeting for lack of childcare. I'd like to throw my name in for the chair of that committee, but want to make it clear that he does have, he's the coach of Morris Twin team, so he needs to manage that accordingly." And he goes, "Otherwise, we're excited and happy to help as part of the committee, and with grant application ideas and applications moving forward."
We can lead at the pool.
So, I mean, he's, I think it's great, I think we've got some opportunities in front of us for today and tomorrow, and that's really some good stuff.
Are we still into old business?
We're, we're actually... This is actually a new business.
So it's just one of the things that's kind of dropped off our radar too, that I think where are we with it all, so what? They, we haven't heard from them recently. So I think that's something we need to follow up on, it was full speed ahead, and now it seems to be...
The road is in. I don't, I don't know what's done past that. Is it, is it, haven't driven in there?
That's like they've gone off our radar.
I think I read something about they need to hold up regulations and things that are going to make it a lot more extended time for you.
This, this state changed the rules after they took out the lease, so that they may have some...
Were they grandfathered in?
I don't know.
Probably, I can do the other thing though.
Yeah.
As I say, I see lots of clearing and nothing for...
Well, the DOT put that, that was done by the DOT road entrance.
And for the...
Always have a new road entrance.
There was one, the tower.
Oh, was it?
There is already, follows off, definitely, there is anything.
Oh, the tower also.
Other future agenda items? Okay, hearing them. Select board comments and announcements. I would like to make note of Keith Ives' service on the school board, and that his terms are up. And to thank Keith publicly for his service for... Have you been on the board, Keith, as long as we've had as separate school board?
I'm a half a year, it's nine days.
But it was counting.
We talked about it last night, that's why I don't know it, but yes.
Thank you, thank you for that service.
And I'd like to say the same thing to Madeline, you are completing nine years. I believe this is coming close to your end of term.
Yes, it is.
So thank you as well, Madeline.
It's been a good run. I'm not leaving town, however.
What about the rest?
On a sadder note, I would like to note the death of Barbara Swain, who died last night. And I would like to have a moment of silence for a good citizen and a good neighbor. She's not passing. Motion to adjourn to executive session, second. Keith, could you stay for this discussion?
Is that the pleasure of the board, or is it...
I, would be the pleasure of at least me, because we need to talk a little bit more about the makeup of the surgery.
At the slide, I did say you're wrong to be the president, you have a subject that you're aware of. And if you are declining, I'd like to know that.